I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the free will of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in every justice and justice. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 2020 Darien Planning Board Meeting. We're not going to let this anymore, are we? Yeah. Or remember, does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding the minutes?
No.
If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll make that motion for the minutes.
Motion by Brandon.
I'll second.
Second by Pam, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. Okay, we don't have a lot going on tonight, other than a few public hearings. First one is Mr. Coffin. Did I say Coffin? How you doing, sir? Go ahead. Well, do we seem kind to read the, uh, um, announcement written in the paper?
Please take notice, the Planning Board will be holding a public hearing to hear the request of Craig Coffin of Darien, New York. Craig Coffin has submitted an application for a special use permit to install upon. The location of said project would be located at 11090 Ortoner Road, Darien, New York, 14040, and 16 dot dash one dash four eight dot 113. Said hearing will take place on October 19, 2020, at 7:35 PM at the Darien Town Hall, 10569 Allegheny Road, Darien, New York, 14040. Line order PVCBA clerk.
Thank you, Glenn. So at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing for the Coffin Pond Special Use Permit. Um, I have received correspondence from Genesee County Planning Board, uh, review dated of October 8th, 2020. Advocate's name, Craig Coffin, prototype, special use permit. Description, special use permit to destruct a pond. Location, 11090 Ortoner Road, Darien. The planning board decision of approval with final explanation. The proposed pond should pose no significant county-wide or inter-community impact. Signed, Free Bay Alderman, October 8th, 2020. So with that, I'll open the floor. Anyone that has any questions or concerns?
What size of the pond, Mr.?
Pond is thirty by seventy.
Thirty by seventy.
It's more of a wildlife habitat than anything.
No, I'm not objecting. I'm for it. I want sure everything is here, a pond on my property, which is a very enjoyable piece of my property. But if this man planned for a pond like that, I am in favor of it.
Good, good, good to hear. Jerry, you got any comments or concerns?
Nope. Nope, it's pretty straightforward. Um, that's when county soil and water came out, um, they don't even classify it as a pond because of the small size and the shallow depth. Um, however, under zoning, um, our definition of a pond, it falls that way, so it's part of the special use permit.
Well, in the interest of time, we don't have much else going on, so we're not going to open another public hearing for another five minutes, so. I will read Genesee County Soil and Water, uh, the letter written in our folder, sorry, August 24th, 2020, addressed to Mr. Coffin. Craig, look at the proposed pond site location earlier today. There's no involvement with your wetland streams, no environmentally sensitive areas, also no archaeological sites or in the immediate area. When I discuss with you, your proposed project doesn't meet my definition of a pond. I would suggest you discuss with town whether they require building permits for either a wildlife wetland or a rain yard. Both are generally great shallow, unusual depth would be two to five feet. While we get our guaranteed cycle of whole water, the soil maps indicate that a pre-mounted soil is a suitable soil for holding water projects. This letter can be used as prior information needed by the town for the Soil and Water Conservation District, that the fact construction imposed will cause no problems with others. Feel free to call for more information. New Orleans Conservation, bound for tomorrow, your commission. I hope. Anyone else have any questions or concerns regarding the Coffin Pond? If not, I guess we move into seeker. Question one, will the proposed action create material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Question two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or density of use of land? Question three, will the proposed action impair the character and quality of existing community? No. Question four, will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that cause establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Question five, will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, like your walkway? No. Question six, will the proposed action cause increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Question seven, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies? B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Question eight, will the proposed action impair the character and quality of historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Question nine, will the proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources? Example, wetland, water bodies, brown water? No. Question ten, will the proposed action result in the increase of the potential for flooding, erosion, or drainage problems? No. Question nine, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. With that, I entertain a negative, I entertain a motion for negative declaration on the Coffin Seeker.
I'll make that motion for negative declaration.
Motion by Brandon, can I have a second? Second by Don, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Negative declaration and seeker. Gary, it sounds kind of boring. Nothing else going on.
Caught up.
It's that time of year, huh?
Yeah.
I apologize, folks. We can't start to open the next public hearing until 7:45. This will have to keep it open for what, ten minutes, Jerry?
Yes.
Yeah. So.
Well, the wind farm is dead? That project is dead.
Yeah.
But I had a meeting this morning, uh, with a potential small-scale renewable energy project. Uh, we have it dead for now. Uh, it was just an inquiry, just an informal meeting. But, um, I would be looking, if we can get a recommendation, uh, to forward that battery storage law back to the town board, so they can proceed with that, that would be helpful too, because, um, this company was interested in to know that we were looking at putting that zoning law in place too. We had discussion about that, so.
Okay.
So that's on the horizon. We're going to see a project that falls under that sooner or later, just in a matter of time.
Yeah, it seems to be, come on, everybody's going solar.
But the battery storage units are going to be part and parcel with, with solar and wind projects. And, uh, the batteries are pretty, pretty straightforward, because they're all software things, or engineer software things. So.
Just the solar projects seem like less impact, less impact everywhere, easier to, easier to get it, construction.
Yeah, we put them in everywhere.
We're working on that project down in there. Are you down there right now, Casadega?
Yeah.
You guys can decide if the crane is down there.
That for solar?
No, this is wind.
The wind?
Yeah. They brought in a monster crane, like, holy cow, that crane is big, and they said, no, that crane isn't set up for the next crane.
Wow.
Some wheels, so came in like thirty-seven little ways to take to break this thing in.
Yes.
Yeah. The boom is three hundred feet long.
Wow.
Pretty amazing, this wax in it.
What was interesting though is there's been concern about recycling the materials in all of these projects.
Yeah.
But they haven't got, a lot of them haven't got to the end of the lifecycle. One of the gentlemen that I was having a conversation with today works out of Tonalonda and works for recycling facility, and they have been, um, they're going to be recycling carbon fiber blades from these windmills. And they're actually starting that operation up, and they can make that material, they can break that material down, they break the windmill, they cut the blades into like fifty-five foot lengths, he said, and they can handle those, and they're getting it to the recycling business. So those types of ancillary services are cropping up too to support.
Yeah, I can see that.
So same thing with solar, there, you know, there's no real recycling plan in place yet, but those industries are developing now that the projects are out there.
Yeah, they're getting bigger all the time. The windmills are. They started off with half a megawatt. Now they're up to three and a half.
Yeah.
I was actually walking inside the blades. I walked right inside them.
Really?
Yeah. That nasal, that, you know, the main ear body, that weighs two hundred tons.
Wow, that's gotta be a huge crane.
One hundred thousand pounds.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's not, if you make one mistake, you don't, you don't get a second chance. Okay, looks like we're there. Does anyone have any more comments or concerns regarding the Coffin, uh, special use permit for the pond construction? Anyone? If not, I entertain a motion, or first of all, I entertain a motion to, uh, close the public hearing. Motion by Pam, can I have a second? Second by Brandon, all in favor? Aye. Public hearing now closed. I entertain a motion to approve the Coffin special use permit for the pond.
I'll approve the motion for the, uh, pond.
Thank you, Brandon. Motion by Brandon, can I have a second? Second by Don, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, Mr. Coffin, go to work. Enjoy your pond.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you too. Okay, next on our document is the Freedom Fellowship Special Use Permit. One, do we seem kind to again to, uh, read the article written in the paper?
Please take notice, the Town of Darien Planning Board will be holding a public hearing to hear the request of Freedom Fellowship LLC of Darien, New York. Freedom Fellowship LLC has submitted an application for a special use permit. Freedom Fellowship LLC would like to build a three-bay service garage, shop, and retail store. The location of said project would be located at 254 Broadway Road, Darien, New York, 14040, and 9 dot dash one dash 43 dot one. Said hearing will take place on October 19, 2020, at 7:45 PM at the Darien Town Hall, 10569 Allegheny Road, Darien, New York, 14040. Line order PVCBA clerk.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, it's now seven forty-five, so the public hearing is now open for the Freedom Fellowship Special Use Permit. Uh, I have received the letter from Genesee County Planning Board referrals, review dated of October 8th, 2020. Advocate's name, Freedom Fellowship LLC, the prototype, special use permit. Description, special use permit to operate a motor vehicle repair shop, comma, print shop, comma, retail storefront, and existing faith-based recovery facility. Location, 282 Broadway Road, Darien. Zoning district, commercial district. The planning board decision is of approval, which is with final explanation. The proposed uses should pose no significant county-wide or inter-community impact. Signed, Free Bay Alderman, October 8th, 2020. So with that, I'll open the floor if anyone has any questions or concerns. Yes, sir, Mr. Leroy.
Good evening. Now, what is the cost of this project?
It's estimated, it's an estimation right now, about four hundred thousand. But that's an estimation, it's going up with the price of lumber.
Nice important question I have, will this be on the tax roll?
Yes.
That portion of the property will be on the tax roll? Again, it's vocational and mechanical, I mean, we're training people in the mechanical aspect of things. Will it be on the tax roll, the same with my property, which is residential, on the tax rolls? You pay the full tax, if you have any, uh, tax incentives from any organization or state?
We don't, we have no tax, not, nothing from the state or anything like that, we're just, we're faith-based. And, um, as that property, I talked to, uh, the tax collector, Debbie?
Yeah.
We had a tight conversation with the, um, months back before COVID happened and before we were talking about the project, and we talked about, um, that taxes would be incurred on that property where the, where the, um, the building's going to be, but behind the pond future, um, we're looking at a parsonage being built behind the pond, and that may not be taxed, but, uh, the building itself that we're conducting business will be taxed.
And that would constitute the three, uh, bay service garage, the retail store, and the print shop?
Yeah, the retail store is part of the print shop, yeah, and, and the mechanical aspect of it, like I said, is vocational, and we're offering oil changes and brakes, minor, minor car repair. We have a master mechanic that works at Dan's Auto Service now that's going to be taking over as master mechanic.
There, I understand business is business, but my concern is that it is on a tax roll, paid in full tax, it's like my property.
Yeah. Yes, that, that, I can tell you that from discussions with Mr. Kula and with the assessor, is that you look up on the, on the screen there, um, where the cursor is there where the pond is, the red is zone, that's all zone commercial, that furniture is all, all commercial, the rest of this is, look, I see residential. That parcel is, uh, six point nine six acres, and that particular parcel, it is being treated as a commercial, um, it's a commercial property with a commercial business on it, will be taxed like any other business.
Oh, and that was my.
The, the revenue, the revenue that they're generating is going to be used to offset some of their other operational needs with their other property, but that property is a commercial property.
The general income to support your own ministry there.
Yeah, we get no money from the government, all the money is, is donation, so that's why we're generating income to support the ministry.
So then, plus or minus, it's four hundred thousand, did you get an estimate on tax? At all, something like that, county tax, school tax, if anything?
No. No, but prior to that, we're paying.
The reason why I bring this up, if you don't mind me talking for a while, is when I moved out here in two thousand, my total tax bill was, uh, let's see. Two thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and seventy-four cents. Two thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, seventy-four cents. This year, what I paid in taxes was seven thousand, I got the figures here correctly, yeah, seven thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. I just don't understand what extra services I received in this town in two thousand that I am now receiving in two thousand twenty, that had this type of taxes. That's why I'm here, to understand that everybody paid their fair share. Doesn't anybody have an answer?
We're playing board. You want to do the town board, Bruce?
Well, I've been there. What I'm just saying, that was my concern, not just that I have a million names.
Your concern is justified, but you're, you're talking to our board. Our board, we're the planning board. We're here to decide if, if faith fellowship is, is, you know, dealing with all the laws of structure.
Well, you're also, I believe, uh, like the opening statements and that on the other with the pond, like that doesn't affect the community. Well, it does affect the community, because I'm part of the community, so that's why I'm here, but I believe the man did answer the question, and that was my concern.
Okay.
But I just tried to give you some history, where I went from two thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars to seven thousand something. And it's not a new build.
Yeah, I'm gonna pay the same tax as you are.
I know.
Yeah.
But everybody there has paid their fair share.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have to ask, was answered, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? No? Well, move on to seeker. Okay, seeker. Question one, will the proposed action create material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Question two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use intensity of land? No. Question two, will the proposed, will the proposed action impair the quality or character of existing community? No. Question four, will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that cause establishment of a CEA? No. Question five, will the proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, like your walkway? No. Question five, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Question seven, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies? No. B, public wastewater treatment utilities? No. Question eight, will the proposed action impair the character and quality of historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Question nine, will the proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources? No. Question ten, will the proposed action result in increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Question eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. With that, I entertain a negative declaration on the Faith Fellowship Special Use Permit?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Pam, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Negative declaration on the seeker. Again, folks, we have to keep the public hearing open for another five minutes, and anyone that has anything else to say, welcome to the staff.
I got some pictures here if you guys want to see it. Here. Projectable. You got some of these in the home garden?
Is that active in color too?
Actually, everything there is, yeah, what it's going to be. Except for the garage doors, the garage doors are going to have, uh, they're going to be more of a, the color of the beige of the trim, and they're going to have glass, three tiers of glass, as you can see right inside.
How you going to heat it?
Uh, we got John Andre Heating and Cooling, he's taking care of running, uh, well, we've got, I got the plans here, we got heating going, gas, boiler heat, and a hot dog in the, in the garage. There's different aspects of it, of the design by the mechanical engineer. Talked to reserve gas already, they're running the gas line to connect it with. Boiler heat in the print shop area, replacing it in the attic, I guess, or.
These are the plants here. Okay.
They're not the wet stoves, are they?
They're what?
They're not the wet staves?
Okay. I'll stick them on this last there.
I assume you're going to do oil change and stuff, right?
Oil change, the brakes.
By the wasteful heater, just the.
Pardon me?
Listen, do you think about doing a wasteful heater, just to save our costs?
Uh, you know, with the oil, I mean, heating up the recycle? It was brought to my attention, but the master mechanic said it's, uh, it's, it's dirty and smelly, and he suggested not to do it.
And we use it in our shop, works well.
Does it?
Yeah.
I gotta look more, I, I don't know, have to look more into it, but that's not what we designed it. I thought it was going to be a good idea too, but.
I don't have all the say on that, I guess.
The print shop, it's, it's doing very well, it's, we're getting some big contracts. Talking to NY University right now, so if we get a, I should play NY University, we'll be doing very well. These are all people that are graduating and, you know, working there.
When you say print shop, like, like, signs or?
No, t-shirts, hats, hoodies, you know, anything, cups, mugs.
Okay.
Do you do smaller jobs too?
Yeah, we got, we got direct-to-garment, right now, we can do one shirt.
Oh, okay.
Design our own, you can, they design logos, I've got one guy, he's a really good artist, he's been with us for five years, he's really good, designs some pretty phenomenal logos. Well, I see a lot of.
Are you doing, uh, just print or embroidery as well?
We're getting into the embroidery now. Right now, it's small. Actually, Austin Dalski, who's telling his uncle, had some equipment for sale, um, from David Broery, part of it, but I don't, we're looking into that, but we don't really want to do anything until the building's built and it's going there.
Sure, yeah. Okay, I think we're safe to. Anyone else have any more questions or concerns regarding, uh, Freedom Ministry's Special Use Permit? No? Anyone? If not, I entertain a motion to close the, um, public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brandon, can I have a second? Second by Don, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Means now closed. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this special use permit.
I'll make that motion to approve this special use permit.
Motion by Brandon, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Pam, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, gentlemen, go to work. Any else, Jerry?
Yeah, just the battery energies, just battery storage, battery, energy storage systems. In order for this to take the next step, uh, the planning board's got to make, uh, an advisory recommendation to the town board, so that they can take it and set the public hearing and approve the town law.
Okay.
So if you guys are happy with it the way it is, you can make the recommendation forward. Like I said, the attorney basically gave us, gave us the, the thing in writing, and I basically just filled in the zoning districts in which we would put it, and, you know, some miscellaneous things, but it goes part and parcel with our commercial wind law and our commercial solar law, um, the language is all similar, you know, the definitions and everything have been added, and, and like I said, the attorney has vetted this, and it was done through, you know, my service state topless, and that was similar to the project I was working on, and they were, you know.
What are they looking for, response from us by some of the possible? Looking for a response as soon as possible, or a regular deadline that they're looking for?
No, um, but I first handed it out in July, and I'd like to kind of get this, keep it moving, so that the, uh, the planning board, or the, uh, planning board's going to make the recommendation to the town board, and then the town board, um, because the attorney wrote it, and the town board, I really think is just going to take it forward, and they have to review it, and they have to do the public hearing, get public comment on it, and then they have to get it approved and submit to the state.
Can we have one more one, or no?
Sure.
We obviously, we're.
I, yeah, I know what you're saying.
So I think I'll reach out to everyone this month.
Okay.
And then just tell everybody then next month, let's be ready to.
Okay, we're not sure, we may not have a meeting, so I don't know, without a meeting, you could submit a referral, or we'd have to, we can actually have a meeting.
I don't know.
I can find out.
Yeah, let me know.
Yeah.
I would think we could just do a, a email, couldn't we?
I would, yeah, or something like this, because it doesn't require, it doesn't require a hearing, it just requires a recommendation.
Right. Right. I, I read, I didn't really have any issue with it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not comfortable voting for him, I guess it probably would be better.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
We're doing budget right now anyway, so.
Hey, how's that going?
I don't know, I'd like to stay on it.
Me too. That's, that's politics, what am I gonna do? With that, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, sorry, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Pam, the adjourn, can I have a second? Second by Doc, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any of the adjourners?